March 28, 2018 to order. It is time. Can we have a call, a roll call, please?
Commissioners Donenfeld.
Present.
Hirschbein.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Maruzzi.
Present.
Woods has not arrived. Chair Calerdyne has not arrived. Chair Wermuth.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March 22. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
An acceptance of the agenda. I wanted to make a suggestion that we move Item 3A after 4A and 4B so that members of the public who are here on items can go ahead of our internal discussion. Is there any dissent to that? Can I have a roll call on the acceptance of the agenda? Or just a voice motion?
I move to accept the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. This is a time for public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allotted to each speaker for testimony during public hearing. Please note that there are no public hearing items on this agenda so that if you are here on Item 4A or 4B, this would be the time to address the commission. Are there any members of the public here to speak? Yes, please.
Okay, your mic should be on now, Tim.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I'm Tim Day with Freehold Communities. I'm here representing Item 4B. Is there staff report?
No, at this point, it is not a public hearing item so that if you want to address us on the item, this would be the time to do it.
Yeah, we're just simply here requesting an extension for our Phase 2 final map. Open to any questions. We're continuing forward with our improvements, the physical improvements and repairing all the infrastructure and all the landscaping, et cetera, on our first final map and getting into the position of moving forward the city on a builder to construct some homes and starting on many center and number of improvements. And we're requesting that the second phase of the project, Master 2, or Final Map Number 2, be delayed until possibly next year with an extension so that we can continue forward with the concentration on this and readdress that a year from now.
This isn't a time to ask questions. This will be before us later.
That's what I was going to ask. That was my question.
I'll have a question for him when the item comes up.
Yeah, obviously you hear that we will have questions for you.
Yes, obviously, yes.
When the item comes before us. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission?
Good afternoon, Commission and staff. Lance O'Donnell, O2 Architecture. And we have an item on the calendar today and happy to take questions at that time. Just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify during public comment? There being no additional testimony, public comment will be closed. Item 4A, which is 02 Architecture, 02 Architecture on behalf of Francis LeBlanche to construct a single-family residence on a vacant hillside lot located at 977 West Villa Olivera. Staff report, please.
Chair Wermuth and Commissioners, thank you. What you have before you is a new single-family residence proposed on a vacant undeveloped hillside lot. The proposed house is, as you can see, will be located on the screen here in what's surrounded in the red dashed line. It is surrounded by housing on the east and west sides and vacant lots to the north and south. The house is proposed at 2,376 square feet in size and there is a proposed garage of just over 500 square feet. The house is oriented in an east-west direction and the garage is attached at the northwest side of the house. The design of the home includes both flat and sloped roofs. As you can see here in the elevations, the overall height of the house is 14 feet. Generally, for hillside properties, we like to see stepping of pads. However, in this case, the applicant is proposing one pad for both the home and the garage for the entire structure itself. So what they've done is they've essentially created a midpoint for the overall grade and that point is actually lower than the average of the two pads to the east and west, the west being the higher elevation, the east being the lower elevation for the site. So the proposed pad elevation and finished floor will be lower than the average between those two homes. There will be a partial retaining wall for the finished floor on the east side of the house and as well as the west side to hold earth on the west side of the property. So what you see here in this diagram is a section through the home in the east-west orientation. In the middle, it shows the house on the low side, on the left side of the screen, which is the east side of the property, and then the house to the west of it on the higher elevation. So it does indicate that the proposed house integrates with the hillside well in terms of its compatibility. The applicant also provided some three-dimensional renderings, which you see here on the screen, at different vantage points around the site. And the proposed materials include neutral grays and whites and include metal standing seam roof on the slope portions. And they propose off-white stucco for some of the walls as well as some other materials as you see on the screen. Generally, as far as the landscape goes, they are proposing essentially kind of to renaturalize much of the terrain that is disturbed as a result of the house and the grading that occurs for the project. They are proposing some additional trees, which you see here on this plant pallet. They are proposing palaverdes, six of them, 36-inch box size. And they are proposing some low shrubs on the ground. So this item was reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee back on March 5 of this month. And the AAC recommended approval of the project subject to three conditions. The applicant has completed the first two, which are, excuse me, the second two conditions, which are to indicate the location of the trash enclosure. They've shown that on the north side of the garage. It's not shown in this exhibit on the screen here, but it is shown on the site plan, which is sheet SD1. And then the third condition, which was move the ground-mounted AC equipment to the north so there's adequate space for planting and walking clearance on the east side of the property. So when you look at the site plan, there is equipment shown. The equipment shown here on the right side of the property, the top of the screen, or actually just next to the driveway, that was moved and is actually per the direction of the AAC. So that's been moved so that there is adequate clearance for pass-through and maintenance personnel that need to get to the pool. So staff has included condition number one from the AAC, which is that site fencing is to be reviewed by staff at a later time. That's included in the draft resolution before you. Staff has recommended approval of the project as presented in the draft resolution attached to your report. And I'm available if there are any questions. Thank you. Ms. Chair Wermuth, I just would also like to indicate, before we dive into that, that the applicant was notified of the city's solar policy with respect to requiring 2 watts per square foot. So they are able to address that when the item comes up or there are questions specific to that. But they have prepared a preliminary design for that system, as I understand. And lastly, we have the material award here to pass around for the commission's benefit.
Just before I hand this over to questions, your last comment, does that indicate that you've prepared a condition under planning conditions to accommodate the solar policy?
I don't know that we've drafted the standard condition at this point, but we can craft one before the commission takes a motion.
Possibly our new attorney can craft that while we're getting ready to discuss this.
Yeah, under the, excuse me, under the staff report on the table of compliance with the standard conditions, I believe it says that there's a, under the front yard setback, it says that there's a 20-foot proposed setback, whereas 25 is required. And I believe it actually may be a lot more than 20 feet, but either the number's wrong or the compliance is wrong.
That's a, yeah, correct. That's a typo. So it's probably about 30 or 35 feet.
Yeah, I measured it at about 40, if we did it correctly. And then two more. I think you answered one on your staff presentation, but I want to confirm that is there a single air conditioning unit or two air conditioning units?
There are two air conditioning units.
And they're, one of them is located there to the, I guess that's the east of the driveway where it kind of bends and right at the edge of the property line. And that one was relocated away from the house. And maybe the architect can answer that, or maybe you can. Is there any penalty that is taken when you relocate a unit like that away from the house? Is there more, I mean, the cooling has to travel further. Is that a good idea or not?
I'll defer that to the applicant's answer. I'm not sure in how that all works with the Title 24 codes.
And then the, there's another, it isn't quite labeled what it is, but just to the north of the garage, to the west side, is that another air conditioning unit or?
Correct.
Again, that one's pretty fur away from the house itself. And I don't know where the units are going to be in the house, but maybe the applicant can address that question in terms of its efficiency of having those condensers that far away. That's all my questions at the moment, Madam Chair.
If we can direct the questions towards staff and Commissioner Donenfeld, then we'll come back to questions to the applicant.
David, I have a couple of questions. You notice in the project description, the site topography includes a number of large boulders and slopes downward from west to east. And then in looking at the guidelines, you say topography will be adjusted to accommodate the flat pad of the home and the outdoor pool deck area. Can you tell me exactly what is being done to the topography to make the site suitable for development? And I'm particularly concerned about whether there'll be any boulder crushing or removal of the existing boulders or just a realignment of the boulders.
So currently, there is a somewhat significant boulder berm along the edge of the site adjacent to the street. So that essentially would be retained. The modifications would really be mostly concentrated near the center of the site where the proposed home, garage, and outdoor living space would be at the rear. The applicant would be making some adjustments to the drainage of the site, which you can see in the preliminary grading sheet, which is the last sheet of your attachments. But essentially, what they're doing is the bottom left or the southwest corner of the site, there is a, I guess, an arroyo that essentially traverses just around in that corner. And essentially, they're going to maintain water flows as they are in terms of what it is today. They have to convey drainage as it is today in the drainage plan as well as retain onsite any impervious surfaces. Any new impervious surfaces have to maintain or retain water onsite. So there are some areas where they would be doing that. You see that on the easterly edge of the site as well as the southwest corner of the site. So there would be some adjustments there. But to answer your question with respect to rock crushing, that has not been indicated to us and we would not allow that. So that would be something that if they were to do that, we would have to get a specific approval.
And then I would assume also to create the pad for the home itself, there's going to have to be some infill done because there's no level plane currently on the site. So will they be filling in sort of in the middle of the site where the house itself will sit? The pad will sit?
So actually, they'd be actually, because of the pad that's being created, there's actually a decrease in earthwork. There's an overall, yeah, decrease in earthwork. So the total raw cut is 172 cubic yards and the raw fill would be 55 cubic yards. So there'd probably be 120 or so cubic yards of export.
And will any of that affect the drainage?
That would be accommodated when the grading plan.
It is.
They review that as part of the preliminary hydrology plan.
My last question is, this house is on septic. I noticed that from one of the planning conditions. But I noticed in the planning conditions that when, if and when water, sewer infrastructure is brought to the neighborhood, the applicant will have to hook up within a certain period of time. How is that enforced? And how do we know that the conditions are ripe for that sort of reattachment and running a private line?
Just looking for the conditions, sorry.
It is. It's planning, it's, I'm sorry, engineering condition 10.
Yes. The sewer line, properties are excused from connecting to a sewer line if the existing line is over 500 feet away. But the property is conditioned to connect to it should a sewer line come within 500 feet of future extension. So that is recorded with the property and there's a covenant recorded against the property for future connection.
And so most of the homes in the near vicinity to this site are on septic and are not hooked up to the sewer system?
I'm not sure about the other homes in the area. Most of them in this block are not connected to a sewer line.
And so obviously, this site is not within 500 feet of any existing infrastructure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
But again, when a sewer line is extended to it, they have a requirement to connect to it.
And they will be noticed with respect to having to do that?
Yes. When we construct a new sewer line, we notify the residents in the area that it is coming and the date and when they will need to connect to it.
And the property owner is responsible for the cost in hooking up to the new line, main line?
They are responsible for the cost. We supply the sewer extension. They supply, they have to connect to the new sewer line.
Thank you.
Going down, any more questions for staff? Commissioner Woods?
Just a couple of questions. Can you tell me, what is the city's code regarding, I noticed that the pool equipment and the AC equipment is within the public right-of-way and in some cases, right on the property line. So what is the city code regarding placing equipment, mechanical equipment within the setback area?
So the section that regulates permissible intrusions or projections into yards is under 93.01 of the zoning code. Specifically subsection F discusses the types of permitted projections. You can have mechanical equipment within the yard spaces. The section that discusses mechanical equipment, actually, I'm sorry, is subsection G, but it says that you can have mechanical equipment that is adequately enclosed to prevent noise impacts to adjacent properties is permissible in any yard except the front yard where you can only extend five feet into that 25-foot setback. So in this case, the proposed equipment does comply with the requirements of that section. They are enclosing it with the walls, and they are not more than five feet into the front yard.
I have a question for the city engineer. Just an explanation, and it's probably on the items that are deferred, especially engineering condition number four. Is that just not physically possible?
As I understand it, this would be the only lot in the neighborhood that would have the curb if we conditioned it for.
So if it says it's deferred?
It's deferred until such time as there is, there is a project that puts in sidewalk or curb and gutter in the entire neighborhood.
And so we don't, in this neighborhood, we don't have sidewalks or curb and gutter?
That's correct.
Okay. But if, and I can't imagine that happening, at some point, it's required, they would be required to do it?
That's correct. We would pull the covenant.
Okay. I know that there were a few questions that came to staff that might have been questions for the applicant.
Actually, I have a couple more questions for staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
So David, on the air conditioning that's in the front yard on the east side of the site, how tall is that wall that's surrounding the air conditioning unit? Do you know?
I don't think there's a height indicated, but it would have to comply with the standards of the wall's ordinance.
The house that's to the east of the property appears to be non-conforming. It almost appears to be directly on the property line.
Okay.
Is that correct? Or do you, I mean, just by looking at the map that was submitted in the staff report and the aerial view?
It does definitely look pretty close. I think the last sheet that has, it's the preliminary grading plan. Maybe that is the roof line, and that may not actually be the wall line, but it's definitely closer than what is typically permitted, if it is accurate. 10 feet is the typical side yard setback.
And then the other question is, could you pull up on the overhead, the north elevation of the property? So in the center of, is the north elevation, you said there's an existing boulder berm that's going to remain. Is that depicted in that graphic?
No, it's, well, it is, you see it somewhat here in this graphic. I don't know that it's 100% accurate. I think it's actually going to be, well, it could be accurate, I just don't know that, you know, it's a straight, two-dimensional view. So when you're standing on the road, you may not see all of this. You may see just a portion of the garage instead of as much as you're seeing here.
And will the trash that they put to the north side between the garage and the street be in an enclosure?
It's not indicated as such at this time. But there's a code requirement that any trash receptacles that are in the front have to be concealed from view of the street. So if the boulder berm did not adequately screen that trash enclosure, staff would require that they install a screen wall.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Caladyne, you had the questions about the grading?
Yeah, the question about the, actually, the air conditioning.
Mr. Vice Chair.
The relocation, one of them is caused by.
Can you put your?
I'm sorry. The relocation of one of them is caused by the Architectural Advisory Committee, and I'm not sure we're actually, well, I don't want to give an opinion, but yet. Is that remote location acceptable or?
Yeah, so the accepted practice that we work with is 100 feet from the condensing unit to the forced air unit or the fan coil. And this is about 45 feet. And then if you get over 100 feet, you just have to upsize the refrigerator lines.
Would you be insulating the, the things run underground and require extra insulation and such like?
Yep.
And the trash receptacles, is there going to be any coverage of them and screening of them?
Yeah, so anybody who's familiar with work that goes on in these hillside sites knows that when you do the overexcavation below the pad, you're going to, you're going to generate a lot of rock. And those rocks are anywhere from teeny little, you know, two-inch to four-inch to huge, you know, huge Volkswagen-sized rocks. And our intention is not to take any of those rocks and take them anywhere else, but to kind of constructively put them around the site so that we can minimize site walls, we can minimize sightlines into the front yard, into the rear yard. And so the intention is to really renaturalize, but not take any boulders off-site, nor is it to create an unnatural jetty at the front and just pile these things up so that, you know, it just doesn't look like it belongs there. So moving the rocks and keeping them onsite, we've got, you know, as you can see, we've got a lot of room, a lot of open space to place those. And that's the intention, is to place the most beautiful rocks at the top, and any little small cobble, I think David mentioned, there's almost 100 yards of export that, you know, we'll try to find a place for, but some of the stuff will come off-site.
Yeah, one quick question, Lance. Where's the fencing around the pool? Where does that occur?
Yeah, so two things. We're going to do an automatic pool cover, and that's twofold. What is to keep the water warm and to keep critters out of the pool? And then it's a safety thing, but the building and safety department does not recognize that as the barrier between the public and the pool or somebody wandering on site. So we are going to work, and we found it best to work with the fence idea once we know where the boulders are, where we have these moments where it's somewhat penetrable from the exterior to the interior. We want to get it so that it, David, could you put the site plan up, please? We want to get it not up by the pool, but down, down in the slope, near the edge somewhere. So while we will be putting in more fence, it'll be less visible, because down in that little arroyo at the bottom, on that southern edge, there is, you know, a good deal of stuff that's already growing down there. So it'll be concealed from our homeowners, and as well, it will be out of the sightline of the adjacent properties. So it's going to be something where I'm probably standing out there going, here, not there. And we're just kind of working it into landscaping.
Any other questions? Then this matter is before the commission. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to get a sense of the commission. I'm just a little concerned that the Architectural Advisory Committee went one step too far relocating at least that one air conditioner, but I don't know if anyone else shares that concern or no. If not, then drop the idea.
Where would you relocate it to?
They had it, originally, it was adjacent to the home, right? In the normal spot, and there was a four-foot clearance between the unit and the.
Chair, Chair Wermuth, if you look at the last sheet, SD-7, that shows the original location that was proposed.
Can you clarify the AAC's thinking on requiring the move?
So they wanted to ensure that there was adequate space along the side to add additional planting and clearance for personnel that would have to service the pool. So the combination of those two items were the reasoning for moving that.
Many, many, many homes have four feet in that dimension.
Is that how much would be left, four feet?
About five.
In this regard, using my prerogative as chair, can I ask the applicant their preference
Our preference would be to leave it where it was.
The original location?
Yeah, the original location.
Thank you.
Can I ask the applicant to come up one more time? Thanks, Lance. Obviously, a large concern with the homes that have already been built is that the air conditioning units on the adjacent properties are right next to people's windows. They buzz, they, you know, some of them are very loud. What is right adjacent to where you originally proposed the air conditioner on the house just to the east? Are there any, is that a garage?
Is that a sleeping room? Is it a garage? Is it a, you know, truly, I have no clue. The property line wall's already there, so there is a block wall that, standing on our side of the property, and the grade there won't change on our side, I can't see over it. So I don't know if there's a bedroom there, or if it's a public space, or if it's a garage, or if it's a patio. I don't know. What I can say is, the air conditioning units that we are now installing, because of the super-high energy efficiency and the variable, the variable speed motors, they are so darn quiet. It's not like the old days. And, you know, certainly 20 years from now, it might not be the case with that unit as it ages, but boy, you can't almost tell that they're on anymore, so, for what it's worth.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The matter is before the commission. I would entertain a motion, and then we can look at conditions.
Okay, I'll move the staff recommendation, Madam Chair, and then I'll suggest a condition or amendment.
And seconded by Commissioner Donenfeld, comments?
Then I would propose an amendment that the air conditioner be relocated back to the original position.
Yes.
I don't feel comfortable second-guessing the AAC on this. They think, they look into this very carefully, and I would like to stick with their recommendation.
Okay, well, that's a comment on the motion. We'll probably have to deal with the motion as it exists unless you want to make us an alternate motion that would be.
There's no second, I don't think.
There is a second.
Second, okay.
Commissioner Hirschman?
The amendment.
I'd like to concur with Commissioner Marcy for that reason, as well as, I think Commissioner Woods was leaning towards keeping it where it is because it's further away from the adjacent residents as well. So for those two reasons, I'd be willing to, I would support the AAC recommendation.
Without a second, I think the thing dies, right?
No, we have a second.
On the amendment?
Well, I thought your, I thought your main motion included that item in your made motion. Why didn't you?
Does it include it?
Doesn't it include it?
No, I was just making an amendment.
Well, how do you, you made a motion, and then you made your own motion?
That's what I thought was you suggested.
Usually, what I, you're the maker of the motion, so if you want to add items to it.
I'll withdraw this, suggested change.
I have a couple of suggestions for the people that have made the motions. One is that we include, and we have, that in the future, we have standard language regarding solar, and that the solar language be included as one of the planning commission conditions. I don't know if you've had time to write a condition.
Plenty, Madam Chair.
Jim, would you introduce yourself?
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's my pleasure to be here today. My name is Jim Priest. I'm with the law firm of Best, Best &amp; Krieger. And starting today, I'll be serving as your new planning commission attorney, assisting Mr. Kotkin with other city legal issues as well, and also assisting the planning department as well with these things. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Based on the comments that the commission had earlier, we were proposing planning condition number 10. That seemed to be the best place to plug it in here. And we would suggest the following language, which I would just read into the record here. "The project developer shall install a solar slash photovoltaic electrical system to serve the project in accordance with the city's solar policy adopted by the city council on January 3, 2018." That would be our suggestion.
I'll accept that as part of my motion.
You can make comments, yes.
Can I ask a question of the attorney?
Yes.
When does it become necessary to put a planning commission condition in an approval that's also within the city code or policy?
As a general rule, if the municipal code already sets a legal limitation on how one may develop, typically, you don't have to add that as a condition of approval as well. But as a matter of practice, many cities do, just, you know, to belt and suspenders it, to indicate that in the condition of approval, you will follow the municipal code on this issue. So it's really a question of just how each city does that. It's not, I wouldn't say it's strictly required if the code already commands it, but it's common to have those.
The code in this instance does not command it. This is a city policy that is in front of the planning commission that we would generally be asked to include it unless the applicant provides reasons that we find substantial as to why it should not be included.
A policy is not a requirement.
A policy is not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct in that, Flynn?
Yes, you are correct. The city council adopted a policy, but we did not amend our zoning code.
Knowing that it's a policy and we don't have a specific ordinance to cite, is your language sufficient to pick up the two volts, watts per square foot? Because it's a policy, would you not enumerate that, perhaps since you're not referring to an ordinance?
Well, I mean, the condition says that you will install a solar system in compliance with the solar policy. So that necessarily incorporates the details of the policy.
And do we have a solar, is, do, did the council pass by resolution a solar policy?
That is correct.
Fairly detailed in terms of these kinds of issues?
Yes, the policy does indicate two watts per square foot as a minimum standard.
Thank you.
Can it become code at some point?
2020.
It's anticipated that the state will require solar in 2020. Again, that's anticipated.
So that addition is accepted by both the maker and the seconder. The other thing I would like to include, even though it's in the proposal, is that what they're going to do is basically realign the rocks that are onsite, refurbish them onsite. I'm not sure if there's good language for that, but to redistribute rocks, major, larger rocks that come up during the grading onsite in a more natural form, if that language or if there's better language.
I would include, there will be no removal of rocks. They will be, but they will be arranged.
Or crushing.
There'd be no crushing or removal of major, you may be removing some gravel and fill, right? So I wouldn't say rock.
I guess you're right.
Larger rocks, would that be?
Rocks larger than one foot.
Rocks larger than, yeah.
Is it a circumference or a diameter? Two feet, two feet diameter?
Okay. Any other language on this that anyone wants? Commissioner Woods?
First, I'd like to say that I understand the applicant has reached out to some neighbors and introduced themselves, and the neighbors were very positive in that respect. Secondly, I think Lance has a couple other homes in the neighborhood that have been received very, very successfully. I think this house will be received very successfully and additive to the neighborhood, and it's looked forward. But I do think we do need a couple of conditions. One, Kathy, you had just mentioned about the berm. I think one of the issues that's come up is that people use rock berms in lieu of fences and call it landscaping, and thus don't need to meet the setback and whatnot. So I think basically, our condition that you are proposing needs to go further, there will be no rock berm between the home and the street. If they want to fence, that's fine, but putting rock berms, or I think the applicant called it jetties, is something that has been, has some consternation in the neighborhood. The other thing I say, I think I would like to see a condition that basically says we will physically screen through a structure the trash enclosures, since we really don't know what that means. And I think the, there was some indication that that could be done relatively easily and very cost-effectively. The last thing that I might ask as a condition is that, you know, when pool equipment's right on the property line and you have neighboring homes so close to the property line, it does cause a noise problem, depending on when they run their pumps, even if they're quiet pumps. And I might just ask a condition just to relocate the pool equipment somewhere more near the pool or in the center of the lot. near the pool, or in the center of the lot.
I have a maker and a secondor of the motion. Are those acceptable to you?
Well, those are being added to the motion?
No, I'm, I'm asking the maker and the secondor. There were suggested additions.
I have no problem with the trash enclosure. I'm, I need to think about the pool equipment a little bit, so.
You know, what's one, one person's problem is another person's advantage. I think you have to balance the adjacent owner to the noise created onsite as well. And I think what Lance has done here is he's placed it sort of in between, so, so it will impact both similarly. I think if he gets too close to the house and the house, then the owner himself is going to be concerned about it. So, I would leave it where it, where it is. With respect to the berming with the rocks, obviously, we wouldn't want that to happen. I don't think the architect would do that. But if Mr. Woods feels better about having in the conditions, I would have no problem with that.
We'll accept that and not accept the other one?
Do we make comments then, on the motion, once it's-
We will, yes. We, so we have a motion. Do you want to restate the motion, Flynn?
The motion is to approve the project with the following added conditions. Number one is relative to the city's solar policy, which has already been read into the record. The second is to redistribute, redistribute the larger rocks, those being greater than two feet, on the site in a naturalized form, rather than hauling them offsite. The third suggestion was by Mr. Woods, relative to not having a rock berm at the front of the property, as I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Woods? And then, the fourth condition is to require a screen for the trash facilities, so a trash enclosure screen would be required. And then, the fifth condition that was proposed to be added was relative to moving the pool equipment. So, those were the conditions. There was discussion by the planning commission as to whether those last three conditions would be included as part of the motion.
I think the two of them were by the maker and secondor.
What was the one about not having a rock berm?
Mr. Woods, if I could have you restate the intent of that condition?
Yeah, so, so what happens is that some people will go out and they'll create a rock berm that basically is a wall or a fence within the setback. And it does not have to, when you do that, the city looks at that as being landscaping. But the consternation comes when somebody wants to put a fence up versus a rock berm, and they're not allowed to do it, but yet you can, you know, you can pile rocks to be basically a jetty or a wall between the street and the house. And really, I don't think the intent of the code is to do that at all. That's why we have all of our fencing requirements. So, but some people use, avoid the fence and build a rock berm, is what they end up doing. So, my, my proposed condition was to expand upon, Madam Chairmans, just to basically say there would be no rock berm between the house and the street.
Okay, I guess.
After that? So, what we have, what we have for comments is a motion with all of the conditions accepted, except for-
Pool relocation.
Except for the relocation of the pool equipment. So, if there are comments on this right now?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable second guessing the architect as relates to a berm in front of the house. I don't know enough about how it would look. I think it's up to the architect in terms of his aesthetic sense, and knowing him, I think that it would be appropriate, if that's what he wants, and he thinks the client would also agree. So, I just, I don't like making such specific decisions without knowing what it's going to look like. And I'm trusting him in this regard, so I don't feel comfortable voting for that.
Madam Chair? Yes, can I, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know that the architect has said that he intends to put a rock berm in front of the house. Can we ask you that as a question? Oh, I will put it on, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The intent isn't to create something that feels unnatural. I think when we, when we go out to the alluvium, anywhere in the Chino, Chino Cone area, there's, there's areas where rocks are exposed, and they're, they're just sort of, you know, wafting downhill. And then, there's little dry arroyos next to them. And they look most natural when these rocks are exposed, and they have that deep, deep kind of patina, almost like an eggplant color, where they've just been exposed to the sun for so many years that they're just these sort of beautiful things that just sit out there. So, our intent is to find the most patinaed, the most beautiful, the most kind of elegant rocks, and to use those to screen the home from noise from automobiles, headlights from automobiles, and to a certain extent, help with the prevailing winds that are strong up there. We realize that anything much over four, five feet starts to look unnatural. So, it wouldn't necessarily be an abrupt jetty, but rather, a stacking of these rocks that we're going to naturally pull out of the site, and we need to put them somewhere. And so, the largest area that we have is the front yard. So, the, the intent is to have a gradual slope up and a gradual slope back down. And then, in between that, just insert the incelia, the creosote, and other things, so that, at the end of the day, it just feels like it was always there. So, that's the intent. And I think we have enough material, or we're going to have enough material, to, to do that. The site has had fill dumped on it over the years. And our geotechnical report shows that there's a lot of blacktop in that fill, and blacktop will tend, because of the oils and things, and it'll tend to shrink over time. So, we're going to have to pull a great deal of that out. So, there's a lot of junk in there as well. I don't want anybody to think that this is just a little pristine site. Somebody took a roadway and dumped it on that back half of that site, and we're going to have to sift through that. We're going to have to be very careful about how we move that around, because at the end of the day, we don't want the neighbors looking at the blacktop, and we don't want to be looking at the blacktop. But the reality is, it's there, and in large quantities. So, the boulders, using the boulders to cover up these areas, to renaturalize, we're putting in a new, a little arroyo that comes back to the house, and then we're using that as the detention area, to try to make it look as natural as, as we can. So, we're doing a lot of things that are, we feel prudent, that will give the homeowners a real sense of joy, just being onsite. Because one of the great things about being up on the hillside there is the natural beauty of how, over the geologic time, this thing was formed. And there's a really great little arroyo right in the back. So, Commissioner Maruzzi, I really appreciate what you're saying, which is, you know, let the design team kind of run with what, what they feel, with their experience, and, you know, some of it's going to come down to pure mechanics. Can that tractor move that thing? Or is the best we're going to do, just push it a little bit? And we encounter those. I encountered those on my own home. So, there's a lot of practical stuff, but there's an art to this as well. And so, you know, with, with a little bit of latitude, and, and if you guys can trust us, we will, we'll make this thing look as natural as it can be. And then, the great thing about the desert is, with a couple of years, the plant material starts taking over, and what you thought was a big rock pile, all of a sudden becomes what feels very natural.
Madam Chair, I have a suggestion that might address the concerns of the planning commissioners, as well as give latitude to the architect in terms of the placement of the boulders.
Thank you.
What we might do is just state that in terms of relocating boulders on the site, the boulders shall not exceed the city's wall height requirements. So, that keeps it four and a half feet at the front yard setback line, no more than six feet maximum. And so, that way, we put a cap in terms of how tall those relocated boulders could go, while still giving flexibility in terms of the placement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
So, if that's acceptable, we'll add that to the condition.
Is that acceptable to the maker and the secondor?
It's acceptable to me. I reconsidered my decision on this. We've dealt with this architect a lot, and he's done a really fine job with his projects in the city. And I would, I would trust Lance O'Donnell to do it right, and not to make it an eyesore for the neighbor.
We'll take out the condition that talks about not having a berm.
I would agree with that.
We will take that out and add to the condition, when we talk about renaturalizing the rock on the site, that-
Condition on height.
That there'll be a condition on height.
Correct.
Good suggestion.
So-
Motion? I forgot. Does the motion include not allowing, or the relocation of some equipment, or, I forgot that part?
It does not include the relocation of, it includes the condition from the AAC regarding the location of the air conditioning equipment to allow for the walkway, and it did not include a condition regarding the relocation of the pool equipment.
So, that's opposite of what the AAC suggested? That part of it?
It's consistent with the AAC.
So, everything you propose is consistent with what the AAC proposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Are there other comments? I just had one to the commissioners who did not want to take a position different than the AAC. They are advisory to us. We are not obligated to take their advice. It's often very useful. But there have been many times in the commission's deliberations, including the last meeting we had, where one of the items that was suggested was not adopted. So, I just, I just wanted to say that, that I, I do think the commission needs to look at their advices, advice, and deliberate on it, but not have it be an automatic decision.
I'm aware of that. If that's, if you're directing it at me.
I'm directing, yes.
I'm aware of that.
Yes, I am.
And I've, you know, I've attended AAC meetings, and I know that the careful thought they put into these things. So, for me, to go against their recommendation, it requires something pretty significant.
Okay, we have-
That's how I look at it.
We have, I just, one comment. I probably would have, I'm going to accept the motion, but I would have been more comfortable relocating pool equipment. And that's just an experience I have in my own neighborhood, where maybe the lots are a bit smaller, but the pool equipment right on a neighbor's line can sometimes be difficult, and it being five feet or three feet further in softens the noise that comes off of pool equipment. So, I'm not going to belabor it, but I'm going to say that I think that that was, that's something that if, for those of us who live in untiter lots, it's really important that that equipment sometimes not be right on the property line.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could?
Yeah.
Just if, if the applicant or the, the architect decided they wanted to move the equipment at a future date regardless of our motion, that's minor, and that could be done at a staff level. Is that correct? Yeah?
Yes.
So, at this point, there being no more comment on the motion, I'm going to have This passes unanimously. Congratulations.
And I also want to acknowledge the O2 architecture contributions to the city overall,
Okay. Moving right along, 4B, Freehold Capital Management LLC requesting a one-year extension of time for Phase 2 of the Track Map 31848, previously approved subdivision for the development of 1,150 residential units and an amenity center located at 801 Sunrise Parkway, otherwise known as Muralon. Staff report, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the planning commission. So, the item before you now is a request for an extension of time for a map that was approved by city council in 2004. So, one thing I do want to bring to your attention is that when this was approved, it was actually phased. So, there is a phase one, and then the phase two. If you recall, about the same time last year, we did bring this extension before you, and you recommended approval to the city council. I also want to bring to your attention that Phase 1 of this map, as you can see on the presentation board, was recorded way back in February of 2006. And part of the reason why Phase 2 has taken so long was because of the economic downturn that the city, and in fact, the whole nation experienced up until the time the new ownership acquired this property. I also want to bring to your attention all the issues that has been enumerated by staff on the first page, to let you know that the applicant has moved forward very vigorously in submitting all the required items and materials and technical studies, and for the final map. And all of those are currently under review and in progress at the city. And also, on page 2 of your staff report, I, we did enumerate from the year 2004, when this project was originally approved, all the actions, all the relevant actions that have been taken relative to this development up until now. So, and in evaluating this request, we went back again and referenced those five criteria that's been established by the planning commission. And I'm happy to let you know that the request is in conformance with all these criteria. And based upon this, staff will be recommending that the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to grant the one-year extension of time to the applicant. So, just, I knew additional material that I gathered that I want to share with you, or some photographs taken at the site. This is how the site looks like today. If you recall, about a year and a half ago, when this project was brought before you to, for amendment, the, the conditions surrounding the perimeter of this project was significantly different. So, but this is how it looks like today. At that time, we did mention to you that some of the offsite improvement have been, were under construction. Most of them have now been completed. So, this is a new sign that the city council approved, I think by December of last year, under assigned district application. So, this is part of the monument sign that was approved and has been installed. The other three monuments associated with the development are under construction. Those will be up very soon. So, staff, based upon all of these, staff is recommending that the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to the city council. The applicant is here, but I'm also here to answer any question that the commission may have. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking here at the letter from Freehold Communities on December 26. It says, "The guardhouse at the Sunrise entrance will be completed in early January." Has that been done?
So, it's almost done. This, that letter was submitted according to the requirement of the code, that it be submitted 60 days prior to the expiration date. So, yes, it's almost done, but I haven't done a final inspection on that yet.
And it mentions project gates as well. I'm assuming that would be part of the same construction?
Correct.
Since I was not on the planning commission when Muralon was approved, how much of Phase 1, so, nothing in Phase 1, except the perimeter, has been done?
Okay, so, the, the housing products, they have not started working on those, but I will be, we have a meeting set tomorrow with one of the developer, one of the builders on Phase 1. So, that should be on very soon. But also, the Planning Area 5, which is for the multifamily development, the application for that have also been submitted. So, those will be coming before you in due course. So, there have been significant progress made on Phase 1.
Have there been a number of Phase 1 extensions of the agreement, of the development agreement over time, since it was 2006 originally?
There were some amendments to it, but that is not, that is not a planning department undertaking that up to the city council. But yes, there were some amendments and renewals to it, yes.
And then, finally, my question is, what are, what are the implications of not approving the time extension?
Well, in this case, so, there are two components to this, to this project. Number one, you have the map itself, right? Then you have the associated plan development district. That is being, that is vested. So, according to the opinion of the, of the then city attorney, because of the significant amount of improvement that had been made on the site, it was deemed that, that PD is vested. So, the plan development is there. So the plan development is there. In this case, I think I would leave that to the City Attorney because this is a map and a portion of this map has been recorded. So I will probably defer that to the City Attorney.
Sure, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, under the Subdivision Map Act, Phase One has already had its final map approved and recorded. So from a subdivision point of view, that's done. It's recorded, final, finished there. There may be other development that goes on there, but for purposes of the map, that's done. So all that's concerned now is Phase Two because that's not done, done legally yet. We're still in a tentative map getting, having extensions requested for that. If the extension's not granted and the tentative map should expire, you end up, the developer ends up in a difficult position legally because if the tentative map expires, the Subdivision Map Act says that map's done. You can't record a final map off an expired tentative map. They'd have to apply for a new tentative map for Phase Two. So you can see it would, it would cause some challenges there for the developer if this tentative map were to expire, especially under these circumstances where the project is, is well underway. So that's why, that's why that's being requested today. It is a discretionary extension, that being said. So I mean, the Planning Commission is not compelled to recommend approval or the council to give approval for an extension. But under the circumstances, staff is in favor of, you know, this recommendation.
Thanks.
Chair.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In the staff report, you say Phase Two is a small portion on the east side. Is it some part of Phase Two that we're looking at or the whole Phase Two?
Yeah, I wouldn't call it small.
Okay, so if you look at the exhibit on the, actually what that is supposed to mean is a small portion of the entire project. So the entire project is approximately 309 acres of land. Phase Two only, is only 97, thereabout acres. So, but also if you look at the, let me get up there. There are some portions here that is actually, even though it is within the whole Phase Two, this is the border of Phase Two that goes all the way from here, here and here. But if you look at the formerly golf areas, those were a part of Phase One and those have been recorded. So, but this planning area for the future multifamily development and all the single family residential lots are all in Phase Two.
Okay, so it's not that small. I've got a couple of other questions. And I apologize to some of my planning commission, some of the commissioners that have more of a planning background than I do, but what, what are the, what's the process from going from a tentative tract map to a final tract map? And what's kept them from getting to a final tract map?
So the tentative is the initial layout of a subdivision that comes before you. So you look at the standard, the development standards of that tentative map, either for a subdivision that subdivides a, an undeveloped land to a number of units or a number of lots. So that is at the tentative stage. That goes before the, the City Council for a real subdivision action that is approving that undeveloped land at that time. It comes back to you for final when all the conditions imposed at the tentative stage is incorporated into that final map. And with all the studies required and all the legal issues that may be relative to that map is now incorporated into the map, that comes back to, to staff and then to City Council for a final action. The reason you have this now is because it's, the applicant is asking for an extension. That's why it's coming back to you. If not, you only, the Planning Commission only sees it during the tentative stage. The final map, that action, the action regarding the final map is taken by this council.
So to go from tentative to final, nothing needs to be constructed. It's just studies and engineering.
Exactly. And to make sure that the number of lots, for instance, that were approved at the tentative stage remains the same.
Yeah, but it's, it's just engineering and studies. It's not construct anything.
Exactly. That's true.
Okay. And when was the tentative tract map approved?
Okay, so for this whole project that, as you're seeing on the board, was approved way back in 2004.
Okay.
And as I mentioned earlier and also indicated in the staff report, Phase One of the entire map was recorded in 2006. So, but since that time, Phase Two has not been recorded. However, there have been extensions over the years. The current ownership only took control of this property, I think a couple of years ago.
So they've had the two years since they took ownership to complete the engineering and apply for the final tract map?
And did other offsite improvements as well.
They would have to do the offsite improvements?
They've done those. They've been, they've been working concurrently on those as well.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the final tract map?
Not really, but there were some studies requested, required of them that they have submitted, yes.
Okay, but it's just studies and engineering. It's not, they don't have to construct any offsite improvements to file the, the, so they've had two years to do the studies and the engineering to, and now they're asking for a third year to do that. Is that correct?
Correct, but I, but I also mentioned in the staff report that they have submitted all those required studies and the engineering work. So, but all of those are in the city. We are going through the review, plan check process.
Okay, so now that clears it up for me. So now what you're saying is they've got a year for you guys to review the final tract map?
Hopefully it will be less than that, but, but they're asking for a year extension, which, which the code allows.
Yeah, Commissioner Hirschman, I might be able to clarify a little bit. As indicated in the staff report, we're kind of in some odd timing here. The developer has submitted a great deal, I think, all of the information that staff needs to move on. But this map is scheduled to expire in May. So some more time's got to be teased out of this to permit staff to finish review and bring this ultimately back before the commission and the council for final, final sign off. And so the developer is asking for this extra time so we can just get the rest of that stuff done.
Right, right. Well, what clarified it was that these reports and engineering have been submitted and now the review process takes place. So that clarifies it for me. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm particularly interested in one of the offsite conditions for, I don't know if it's the map or the PDD for, as it does for Page Two, and that is the extension of Sunrise Parkway. Maybe if the staff knows the status of that condition, because it, I believe that that is.
I would defer that to the City Engineer to address.
What's the status of that?
The design plans have been reviewed. The, the, let's see, the planting plans, the landscaping plans are still under review.
When do you think it, when would it be scheduled to start construction?
As I understand it, it's required before Phase Two is put into place.
Phase Two what?
Is, is, before construction begins on Phase Two.
Any, beginning of construction on Phase Two. And the last, one time when we reviewed this, there was an issue about a traffic signal at the Four Seasons entrance and whether that was ever addressed? Is that still an open question or is that?
This project was not conditioned to put in a traffic signal at that location.
Okay.
It is required to put in a traffic signal at Indian Canyon and Sunrise.
Okay.
As a qualification, it was Sunrise that was a discussion.
That's right, Sunrise at Four Seasons.
Right.
Right.
That will create, the connection is what will create the need for that signal. So, okay. But we haven't moved ahead on, there's, I don't know if it's in the city CIP or anything like that?
It is not a current project, no.
Okay. Okay.
This matter is, I'm assuming there are no questions of the applicant? Are there any questions of the applicant? Would you come up, please?
Is there any connection between Rialto, ownership of Rialto and this Freehold Communities?
Can you hear me? No, the answer is no.
Thanks.
Can you just tell us where you are with the project?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, Brad Chuckart with Freehold Communities. I apologize, I was on a phone call. I thought, realized we'd started when we'd started, but thank you for Tim, for filling in. Yes, so Edward did a very good job of explaining where we are from a physical improvement perspective. But let me take a step back because I know that we have some new commissioners. So Freehold Communities, which is a privately held real estate developer based in Boston with an, with an office here in Riverside, California, bought this project in early 2016 and spent the better part of 2016 working with this commission, among others, to revise the entitlement of the site, to remove the golf course and repurpose the open space for a, a use that was going to be more broadly appealing, taking advantage of certain infrastructure facilities that had been put in place, like the, the park paths and repurposing those as, as walking and hiking trails. And in addition to that, from a physical improvement perspective, yes, we've done all of the exterior work. Question was asked about the status of the guardhouse, but for punchless items, that work is done. There have been gates installed on both the Indian Canyon and Sunrise entrances, which I find to be pretty good execution on the vision that you have approved. If, I would encourage everybody to go out and take a look at them. I think they look great. There's still some minor work left to be done, unfortunately, and I suppose not unexpectedly. We've had a difficult time getting through some of the utility providers and getting their concurrence on how improvements need to be made. Obviously, this project being sort of dormant for 10 years, standards change, things, you know, things need to be upgraded and improved, things degrade over time. And so we have spent a tremendous amount of time and effort doing things that wouldn't be obvious to, you know, somebody that would just, was just driving by from the outside. But if you were to go on site now, you would see huge trenches dug. We've had to rip out all of the vaults in our first phase to the tune of, you know.
All of the what?
All of the utility vaults. They busted dug a hole the size of this room off of Sunrise to get one of them out of there. So, and that, those were not anticipated fixes when we bought the project. So suffice it to say, we have spent, in addition to a considerable amount of money buying the project, millions and millions of dollars to date in fixing it. And we are proceeding as quickly as possible. From a sales standpoint, we do have a builder under contract for the first 44 units in Phase One A, which is kind of the southern portion of Phase One. We are actively marketing additional units there. With respect to the amenity center that you have seen or most of you have seen and approved, we have fully processed those plans through the city. But for maybe a sign off from the fire department, we have essentially a, an approved set of biddable plans. We put together a bid package for that facility. We anticipate submitting that to the general contracting community here within the next month with the anticipated start date in July or August, which would coincide with the start date of the models for our first builder. And as Edward mentioned, you will likely see that architecture before you here in the, in the coming weeks. We're very excited about the prospect, but we are up against it from a timing perspective. We have continued diligently processed the plans for Phase Two. As you can tell, we made this request in January so that we would give enough runway here to either complete that process or get before this body and ask for the extension. We sit here before you now with a couple of months left to go and realizing that we have more than a couple of months worth of work to be done in order to actually finalize things on the final map side. So we don't want to lose the entitlement. The attorney was absolutely correct. It would greatly complicate this project, one that we are very invested in and we believe the community is as well. We've continued to receive, you know, great support from all of our neighbors. And so we would appreciate your consideration, helping us extend so that we don't have to...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, that was not a short summary, but nonetheless, thank you.
This is before the commission. I'm going to make a motion, if I can, a motion to approve and let us see if there's a second and see if there's any discussion. With my motion to approve, this is something that's been before us. Often, over the last two years, we have had a discussion about this extension and the, the implications of it. I think the last time or the time before that we extended this, I don't see any reason not to grant this extension and I'd like the project to go forward. I do have one question for staff, which is simply the design guidelines that we approved previously would apply to anything that got built in Phase Two, wouldn't they?
That is correct. The design guidelines apply to both Phase One and Phase Two.
Thank you. Yes.
And the PDD would still be the controlling document, right? Even if the map were to expire, we'd have to come back with a map that was still consistent with the PDD. So it wouldn't be.
With almost the same map, right?
Madam Chair, if I can ask? It wouldn't have a lot of variety. You would not be, to be consistent with the PDD, you wouldn't, not very many changes would be allowed.
This is before the commission. I had, there is a motion. I don't know if there's a second.
A second?
Okay, nothing's showing on my screen, but we have a motion and a second. It's now before the commission. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, just, I don't know if this is for the staff or the applicant, but would there be just a single HOA or will there be more than one HOA?
There, there will be an HOA for the entire community. The only sub HOA, if you will, will be for the multifamily areas. We're still working on the structure of those. But yes, there would be a supplemental HOA payment by those homeowners because there's just more to be taken care of and more that is taken care of on their behalf than for the single family.
And will the olive groves that are proposed be owned by the HOA? Okay, and the, I understand there, there is an agreement to farm those olives and that would be money that would go to the HOA?
Yes, the, the fruit of those trees would be collected and the benefit of, of, you know, the proceeds thereon or the, the resultant oil would be, would be under the purview of the HOA, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hirschman?
So this is more for staff, sorry. How does this extension or the extensions that have been given and then this extension fit in with the guidelines we've approved previously on extensions to subdivision maps?
Because this is a map, it's specific to Chapter Nine of the municipal code in terms of extensions of time on maps. Generally, in terms of the new regulations that you all have adopted in Chapter 94 of the zoning code, it's basically consistent with those as well. The things that we've added in the zoning code include consistency with the general plan, which it still is. Has the applicant made progress in terms of advancing the project? And our report to you indicates that they have. And so yes, it's generally consistent with the new regulations that we've adopted as well, but as a general rule, maps are subject to the extension of time regulations in Chapter Nine of the municipal code.
Any other questions or any other comments? Can we call the roll? The extension passes unanimously. I've been asked for a 10-minute break. I've been asked for a 10-minute break. Some that have lasted a while, so that may be... I'm calling, and if we can clear the screens, I'm calling the meeting of March 28, 2018, Planning Commission, back to session. And before us is Item 3A, the amendment of the Planning Commission rules of procedure. Staff report on this? Staff report on this?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, as you'll recall, at our last Planning Commission meeting, I provided a draft to you for updates to the Planning Commission rules of procedure or our bylaws. At that meeting, we discussed that one of the issues we were tackling with this change was relative to our August meeting, and so I believe that we have addressed that issue. I also indicated to you that, based on city council policy, we are also making modifications to make our rules of procedure gender neutral. And so those are the two primary changes. And then we also discussed the idea of adding language relative to our subcommittees in terms of how our subcommittees operate. And so what you'll find in the draft copy that you have before you is, under Section E, I've proposed regulations or procedures for our subcommittees. And there's basically three ways that we use our subcommittees, and so I've tried to identify those here. The first is typically where we use a subcommittee when we have a project in process and there's questions about the design aspects of the project. And so that's under Point A, which is we're doing a compliance review for adopted criteria. It's kind of a more focused way to say that what we're looking at is how do we make it conform to our design standards? And so that's one of the purposes of having our subcommittees, is to look at that. And then one of the things that was suggested by Chair Wermuth as we were discussing these is, in addition to that function, or to suggest conditions of approval, one of the ways that we've used that subcommittee, and actually Merrill-on is a good example of that, where we had a subcommittee forum to look at the design standards. And so the subcommittee met to review those design standards, to review them in conformance with our architectural requirements, but also at that point in time talked about proposed conditions of approval that would be added to the project that were later presented to the entire Planning Commission for consideration. And so that's under A. The second one is compliance review for conditions of approval. And that's in situations where you approve a project but subject to conditions, and you appoint a subcommittee just to make sure that when they submit the revised plans, that the revised plans meet your conditions of approval. And so that's the second way that we've typically used subcommittees, is just to make sure that things are in conformance to the conditions of approval. And then the third way that we typically use them is in terms of policy, that we have a subcommittee working currently on our plan development district ordinance, or we have another subcommittee that's working on our golf course regulations. And so what they are doing is doing initial research, which will then be presented to the entire Planning Commission for consideration and for discussion. And so again, I've just tried to map out how we use subcommittees, the way that we use them, how we do notice of those. Also, consistent with city council policy, in terms of transparency, we would also notice the agendas of subcommittees so that the public would be advised of those and be able to attend those should they choose to do so. There's also some other minor suggestions that I received after I circulated the proposed rules of procedure to you on Friday of last week. Those are shown in green, and those are minor changes to the text. With that, that concludes my presentation to you. I will just also mention that Commissioner Callardine and Commissioner Woods also suggested some other minor changes. And what I might do, since I received those late yesterday, if you all wouldn't mind bringing those up in our discussion this afternoon, in terms of the points that you raised in the email to me.
This issue is before the commission. Are there questions of staff before we get into the specifics? There being none, the matter is before us. Commissioner Donenfeld, you had...
Flynn, I understand what you're trying to do with respect to the purpose clause for the subcommittee creation. There are... Oh, I'm looking at page 10 of 12. And I'm reminded of other kinds of cases where we're creating subcommittees that don't necessarily fit these criteria. For example, I'm reminded of the subcommittee that Mr. Hudson and I, maybe Hirschbein, sat on, which had to do with looking at the architecture of the redesign of the cinema complex on Takwitz. And we were very concerned, there was nothing particular in terms of divine standards that they might have violated or not lived up to, but we didn't feel the architecture was proper for the site, and we had all sorts of issues. So I don't think we've covered that kind of a subcommittee. And I would offer some language that might help us if...
Okay. I was just going to say that I would consider that to fall under A.
I thought you did. You explained it that way.
Yeah. Because, again, I have to be very careful in terms of how we use subcommittees.
Right.
And where you are reviewing architecture, because you feel the architecture is inappropriate or inappropriately scaled or things like that, it goes back to our criteria that we've established in architectural review. And so the very concerns that you raised in that subcommittee were relative to our criteria in the code. And so...
Do you think it covers that?
I think it covers that. That's the intent.
I was just going to add a catch-all, which says, because we don't, fact situations are changing all the time. We don't know what we're going to be faced with in the future. I was going to say, as we put in, "or to review any aspect of a pending project discussed but left unresolved by the Planning Commission."
I'm going to look to our city attorney to see if he has any objection to that language as proposed. And I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Priest.
It's pretty vague, but I'm leaving it vague for the purpose of being able to catch those outliers. Yes. Well, that's specific to the conditions of approval. B, I think, is a different...
Yes, new conditions of approval.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I will point out that the language, if you look at Paragraph 1, I mean, the language is permissive. You may form subcommittees on an as-needed basis. It does say committees may be formed to serve the following purposes. I mean, we could say in there, you know, for example, the committees may be formed to serve the following purposes or something, and maybe just keep it a little bit more open-ended. So if you do have that sort of wildcard case that doesn't quite neatly fit into one of these categories, although I think the planning department's done a good job of putting together some very broad categories, it should cover most of it. But I think you'd have the authority under these to form a subcommittee for something that doesn't necessarily neatly fit into this, just in the authority of the commission.
Do you have language that broadens it a little bit, or you think it's... Because you mentioned some language I didn't get, I wasn't fast enough to write it down.
Okay.
I think what you had suggested was combining 1 and 2, and using 2 as examples.
Yeah, the Planning Commission's subcommittees may be formed to serve the following purposes. I mean, we could say in there, you know, for example, the committees may be formed to serve the following purposes or something, and maybe just keep it a little bit more open-ended. So if you do have that sort of wildcard case that doesn't quite neatly fit into one of these categories, although I think the planning department's done a good job of putting together some very broad categories, it should cover most of it. But I think you'd have the authority under these to form a subcommittee for something that doesn't necessarily neatly fit into this, just in the authority of the commission.
Do you have language that broadens it a little bit, or you think it's... Because you mentioned some language I didn't get, I wasn't fast enough to write it down.
Okay.
I think what you had suggested was combining 1 and 2, and using 2 as examples.
Yeah, the Planning Commission's subcommittees may be formed to serve, or for example...
Or not limited to, you could do something to that effect.
Right. I mean, there's different ways we could do that, but...
That would set, I understand what you're saying, and if you could draft something like that in there so that no one could read this as being the exhaustive list of reasons for forming a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think we can open that up. it conform to our design standards? And so that's one of the purposes of having our subcommittees, is to look at that. And then one of the things that was suggested by Chair Wermuth, as we were discussing these, is, in addition to that function, or to suggest conditions of approval, one of the ways that we've used that subcommittee, and actually Merrill-on is a good example of that, where we had a subcommittee forum to look at the design standards. And so the subcommittee met to review those design standards, to review them in conformance with our architectural requirements, but also, at that point in time, talked about proposed conditions of approval that would be added to the project, that were later presented to the entire Planning Commission for consideration. And so that's under A. The second one is compliance review for conditions of approval. And that's in situations where you approve a project but subject to conditions, and you appoint a subcommittee just to make sure that when they submit the revised plans, that the revised plans meet your conditions of approval. And so that's the second way that we've typically used subcommittees, is just to make sure that things are in conformance to the conditions of approval. And then the third way that we typically use them is in terms of policy, that we have a subcommittee working currently on our Plan Development District ordinance, or we have another subcommittee that's working on our golf course regulations. And so what they are doing is doing initial research, which will then be presented to the entire Planning Commission for consideration and for discussion. So again, I've just tried to map out how we use subcommittees, the way that we use them, how we do notice of those. Also, consistent with city council policy, in terms of transparency, we would also notice the agendas of subcommittees, so that the public would be advised of those and be able to attend those, should they choose to do so. There's also some other minor suggestions that are received after I circulated the proposed rules of procedure to you on Friday of last week. Those are shown in green, and those are minor changes to the text. With that, that concludes my presentation to you. I will just also mention that Commissioner Callardine and Commissioner Woods also suggested some other minor changes. And what I might do, since I received those late yesterday, if you all wouldn't mind bringing those up in our discussion this afternoon, in terms of the points that you raised in the email to me.
This issue is before the Commission. Are there questions of staff before we get into the specifics? There being none? The matter is before us. Commissioner Donenfeld, you had...
Flynn, I understand what you're trying to do with respect to the purpose clause for the subcommittee creation. There are... Oh, I'm looking at page 10 of 12. And I'm reminded of other kinds of cases where we're creating subcommittees that don't necessarily fit these criteria. For example, I'm reminded of the subcommittee that Mr. Hudson and I, maybe Hirschbein, sat on, which had to do with looking at the architecture of the redesign of the cinema complex on Takwitz. And we were very concerned, there was nothing particular in terms of divine standards that they might have violated or not lived up to, but we didn't feel the architecture was proper for the site, and we had all sorts of issues. So I don't think we've covered that kind of a subcommittee. And I would offer some language that might help us if...
Okay. I was just going to say that I would consider that to fall under A.
I thought you did. You explained it that way.
Yeah. Because, again, I have to be very careful in terms of how we use subcommittees.
Right.
And where you are reviewing architecture, because you feel the architecture is inappropriate, or inappropriately scaled, or things like that, it goes back to our criteria that we've established in Architectural Review. And so the very concerns that you raised in that subcommittee were relative to our criteria in the code. And so...
Do you think it covers that?
I think it covers that. That's the intent.
I was just going to add a catch-all, which says, because we don't... Fact situations are changing all the time. We don't know what we're going to be faced with in the future. I was going to say, as we put in, "Or to review any aspect of a pending project discussed but left unresolved by the Planning Commission."
I'm going to look to our city attorney to see if he has any objection to that language as proposed. And I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Priest.
It's pretty vague, but I'm leaving it vague for the purpose of being able to catch those outliers. Yes. Well, that's specific to the conditions of approval. B, I think, is a different...
Yes, new conditions of approval.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I will point out that the language, if you look at paragraph 1, I mean, the language is permissive. You know, you may form subcommittees on an as-needed basis. It does say, "Committees may be formed to serve the following purposes." I mean, we could say in there, you know, "For example, committees may be formed to serve the following purposes," or something, and maybe just keep it a little bit more open-ended. So if you do have that sort of wildcard case that doesn't quite neatly fit into one of these categories, although I think Planning Department's done a good job of putting together some very broad categories, it should cover most of it. But I think you'd have the authority under these to form a subcommittee for something that doesn't necessarily neatly fit into this, just in the authority of the Commission.
Do you have language that broadens it a little bit, or you think it's... Because you mentioned some language I didn't get, I wasn't fast enough to write it down.
Okay.
I think what you had suggested was combining 1 and 2, and using 2 as examples.
Yeah. The Planning Commission's subcommittees may be formed to serve, or "For example..."
Or not limited to, you could do something to that effect.
Right. I mean, there's different ways we could do that, but...
That would set... I understand what you're saying, and if you could draft something like that in there, so that no one could read this as being the exhaustive list of reasons for forming a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think we can open that up.
Right on this point, if I could. The question that came to my mind is, two of these types of committees normally report back to the Commission, where the third one, which I think is item B, does not. Do we want to specify, make that clear?
Actually, what I would request is, I believe that we do need to, again, for transparency purposes, report all subcommittee actions to the Commission. So even under B, where they are reviewing things from for conditions of approval, that even that would need to be reported back.
But B, the action, the concern I had about B was sort of the conflict with the last paragraph 5, because I think we decided that if, in some of those cases where they were just reviewing some colors and things like that, the action actually became final without it coming back to the Commission.
But they're not taking action in the subcommittee. They are ensuring that the conditions that have been imposed are met. One of the things I want to be very careful about is, subcommittees don't take action.
Okay. But I mean, they approved it in some way or another.
They found it to be consistent with the approval that had already been granted.
Okay. All right. You win.
Flynn, one of the areas that I think we didn't cover, and I'm not sure their subcommittees, is representative groups. For example, we have had planning commissioners sit on, sit with council on subcommittees as representatives of the Planning Commission, or sit with other boards and commissions in a capacity where they would be making decisions. And that would be the Parks Commission at the direction of city council. Is, and in both of those instances, the commissioners were in a sub, a committee that seemed to be able to take action. So do we want to mention that in some way?
Actually, Chair, I don't believe that we need to, because those subcommittees act under the direction of the city council. And so you are appointed by the city council to serve on those types of subcommittees. So it does not need to be in your bylaws, but rather it's in...
But we're generally appointed by the chair to serve on a subcommittee, or a committee created by council, right?
Yes, but you're doing it under the direction of the council. And so that doesn't need to be in your bylaws. It's under the city council's...
Right, our rules, okay.
Yes.
Other comments on this?
I have one other substantive one.
You want to go to which page?
Six of 12. I think it starts with a paragraph that says, "After the chair closes the public hearing, there should be no further testimony from the public." This is some new wording we have in there. It would be, looks like 13.
It's 12.
12, because it goes 12, and then it goes to 14, I guess. Or maybe, no, nevermind. I just, I can't see the 13 here. But it's the very end of 12, I'm sorry, where we've added the text that says, "The chair made invite the applicant." Do we want to expand that to say, it obviously should be the appellant to be consistent with the text above, but also, there have been cases where we wanted to ask a member of the public that might have some meaningful information. Would we want to include the member of the public to respond to questions of the Commission? Is that...
Yes. Commissioner, I would suggest, in that case, to reopen the public hearing, if you're going to have another member of the public come up and add more information.
That goes to my kind of overall question here, is, by allowing the applicant to give additional information, are we, do we have an obligation to allow the public to comment on that?
I don't believe so. I believe that's still within the Commission's prerogative to limit that. If you're just asking some clarifying questions, asking for some quick confirmation from the developer, or the applicant, appellant, whoever, I would advise the Commission that if it starts getting into a long discussion, we're starting to have a lot more information coming out from the applicant, I would advise that you reopen the public hearing, because then you're getting it officially on the public hearing record. But I think it's a matter of degree, really.
Where we say applicant, I assume that includes all of the applicants, representatives, engineers, and architects, and...
Yes, yes. And again, if you're having the engineer called up and saying, "Is it six inches or eight inches?"
Right.
"Oh, okay, got it, got it." I don't think you have to reopen the public hearing for that. But if it starts becoming a long discussion, getting a lot more detail, my advice would be, at that point, to formally reopen, so that information is all technically in the hearing record. Yes.
We don't, we don't allow questions of the applicant during the public hearing, typically. And so we typically do what we did today, which is, questions of the applicant may come as the Commission is deliberating. And that's been part of our procedure since I've been here. So do you think we have a problem with what we've been doing?
Well...
You've seen it today, in two instances.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we didn't have any public hearings today. We had some new agenda, or new business. We didn't have any public hearings, technically. You know, again, I can talk with the Planning Department, and we can advise the Commission. I'm confessing that, you know, I'm still getting used to Palm Springs and getting up to speed on all of your issues here. So I think, once I have a little better sense of, you know, the history, the procedure, what you guys have been doing, I can coordinate with Planning Staff, and then we can, you know, give you appropriate advice.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Just on that same proposed change, the chair may invite the applicant. It seems to me we, I can't remember a time when we have not invited the applicant to respond to the public hearing, to the public comments.
That's part of the process.
The applicant is always allowed to respond to the public comments at the end of the hearing.
Well, so...
If a rebuttal period, this is if we are asking questions of the applicant.
Right, right. I think, again, we're getting to a question of just timing. You know, if the applicant, you know, you open up the public hearing...
So where does this fall in, then? This...
In this case, there was no public hearing today.
No, not today, but the change here, the chair may invite the applicant to respond.
This came out of the...
Oh, I see, okay.
The recommendations of the PD Subcommittee and Council, and Council's review of it. So this was something that had been recommended that we do, and it was, it came out of PD's, but it was, Flynn drafted it a little more broadly.
Yeah. And Madam Chair, just to add to that, one of the concerns was that when we impose conditions of approval on an applicant that aren't in the staff report or the backup materials, that we'd like to have the applicant agree to those conditions. Those would be conditions that we impose here at the Planning Commission that are discussed.
Do we need to add conditions of approval to the action?
Excuse me?
It's in here.
Yes, in the green. That was one of the things that was suggested that we add, just to clarify that that would be included.
Commissioner Hudson, does this answer your questions about subcommittees? Any other... Commissioner Woods, you had additional comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I know we're not here to rewrite this, but I just, I was confused about a couple of things that I mentioned in the last meeting. Item number 10, which is on page 4 of 12, the first sentence seems to contradict the second sentence, unless I'm, so I'll give you a minute to read it, unless I am interpreting those two sentences incorrectly.
Mr. Woods, 10 of 12?
It's page 4 of 12.
Oh, sorry.
Item number 10.
Okay. I heard a 10 there somewhere.
That's right. Just to take a quick minute to read it, I have a couple of other questions, but, again, I'll repeat, that I think the first sentence is contradictory to the second sentence.
Ah. I think you're right.
Yeah, it is.
Correct, correct.
So for cleaning up, I just might suggest that we clean that up.
Okay.
Maybe there was an intention for something else there, but I think it goes back to our chair, the other part of this question goes back to what the chair was talking about. You know, we bring an applicant up to speak. So I want to use today's example. Let's say we had a neighbor in the audience that had a concern we wanted to hear on the item when the item is being heard. It's not a public hearing. Are we able to take testimony from that resident?
It can be a very fine line between information brought forth in the context of a public hearing, as opposed to statements made in a public meeting. It may not technically be a hearing. You know, when it's a public hearing, we typically advise, you know, get all of the substantive information out between opening and closing of the hearing. Because if there's ever a legal challenge, typically what a court will do is look at what was in the hearing record. What was between opening and closing of the public hearing? That's what the court will look at. So we typically advise, yeah, get all that information out in the public hearing. That being said, if the, you know, Planning Commission hears just a general comment from a member of the public on some issue, it may not be in the context of a public hearing, but it could still be, you know, considered by the Planning Commission. So I hope that answers your question. It's kind of a fine line there. Did I understand the question correctly?
I just, like, and I want to use the example today, a single-family home comes forward. It's not a public hearing. The applicant has an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant.
Yes, yes.
But the public during the discussion of that item seems not to have an opportunity only at the beginning of the meeting. So can we call on a member of the public, if they have a concern, to express their concern? It could be even for the project.
Yes, I believe the Commission would have that prerogative to do so, like any public meeting item. I mean, if somebody on the Commission said, you know, I believe there's a member in the public who has some relevant information, if the Commission's okay with hearing that person, that's fine. So there's nothing inappropriate about, you know, soliciting comments from the public about the items today, and that is all information that the Commission could consider today.
My concern is, we've also got to keep order. And we very often have very contentious issues before us, and a lot of people feel very strongly about those issues. Even in the course of a hearing, after public comment has been given, if we allow members of the public to reinsert themselves in the dialogue with questions of the applicant or questions to us, we're going to get mired in a back-and-forth that will never end. And although I appreciate Mr. Woods' concern about public input and understanding what the public has to say about all these projects, we've got to maintain some sort of order. So I think allowing anyone to raise their hand from the audience to make a contributory comment based on what's something the applicant might have said in his or her presentation would wreck havoc with our process.
I think...
We've never done it.
Yes, we have. Sorry. I'm thinking of the contentious house that we had several meetings ago. I didn't mean to sound quite... I think there was a member of the public who wanted to talk about whether, it was a question of solar, there were two, there were two questions. One, did the house on the north, was the new house low enough that they could look out their windows? And we wanted to ask about the height. And there was a house behind it that had issues about solar panels, and we had questions about that. So I believe members of our Commission asked if those people could explain what they had said in public testimony. And they were allowed to do that, but that was at the request of someone on the Commission.
Yeah, we're not in disagreement on that. You misunderstood me. I agree with you. If a Commissioner feels that someone out there has something to bring to bear on an issue that was spoken about earlier, then at the Commission's direction, I think we should be able to allow a member of the public to add something. I was thinking of members of the public who reacted to something that was being said by a presenter and said, "Well, that's not true," or "I feel, it's affecting me differently." We can't get back in that tit-for-tat kind of a...
And we haven't allowed that. We've kept order. I was understanding that as a different, different topic.
It can be challenging with contentious public hearings. And, you know, a common problem you run into as well, and so I echo some of Commissioner Donenfeld's concerns, are, you know, maintaining order at a public hearing, because what frequently happens is, somebody will speak about something, take their three minutes, next person does it, and all of a sudden, somebody wants a second bite at the apple. "Wait, wait, wait, I want to respond." "No, you had your three minutes." "But I want to talk about this." That can make things a little difficult, and so, obviously, there needs to be some point where the hearing's closed, we're not taking any more public testimony on that. And this policy is just intended to crack the door a little open if you have any last questions of the applicant about conditions of approval. It's a common thing, I'm sure you've seen it, is, "Hey, developer, are you okay with these conditions of approval?" It's a pretty simple question, pretty quick answer usually, and we're done. So that's all this policy really does here. It does not call for reopening the public hearing. Obviously, if a whole bunch of new information is out there and the Commission wants to hear it, the Commission's prerogative is to reopen the public hearing, and then everybody can speak. But again, that's under the Commission's direction.
Just two questions for Flynn on this. When we are in a public hearing, and not, or in a hearing, the people speaking have to speak to the issue, don't they?
Correct.
So it is the chair's prerogative to say that screaming at one of the Commissioners would be, for example, would be out of order?
Correct. And that would also appear under decorum.
Going on and on about the police department is out of order.
Correct.
And in terms of subcommittees where public testimony is allowed, I'm assuming at a subcommittee, the public testimony has to be on the topic of the subcommittee. And is that understood in what we've put together?
Yes, that would be understood, that subcommittees meet for a specific purpose, for a specific project, or a specific topic, that any public comment taken would need to be relative to that.
Do we need to add that into the subcommittee session?
I'm comfortable with the language as it is, that that's understood.
Just to go back to my original question that started the discussion, on number 10, the second paragraph, I just, I think what I was hoping to do is that we had an opportunity, if something came up that wasn't a public hearing, to be able to hear from the public, as is the example Madam Chair just gave us. So however you word that. But then the other question I had was, on the same page, 4 of 12, item D, conflict of interest. I just want to clarify, or want, and maybe we're not at the place to do it now, that we actually have to leave the dais. My understanding is, we don't have to necessarily leave the dais.
Okay. Let me see if I can boil down FPPC regulations for you. Ninety seconds are left.
It's conflicting. I was looking at it last night.
Yeah. Here's the general rule, is if, in fact, a Commissioner has a legal conflict of interest, that Commissioner has to leave the room. And can't stick around in the back of the room. That was actually a change the FPPC made a few years ago, and here's the reason why. You had a case in one city where you had the mayor sitting in the back row, looking at the rest of the council, doing things like, "Excellent." And so they said, "All right, that's it. Just get out of the room, go take a break." The one exception, the FPPC recognizes, if you have a personal interest as a Palm Springs citizen, say, your property would be affected by a commission proposal or something, you would be allowed to come to the podium and speak to the Commission, just like any other citizen during public comment. And then you can sit in the back of the room. But it's only if it's affecting your personal interest. The other nuance to it is, there's really no other suitable representative. So say, this is going to affect your residence, and, you know, you're the better public speaker than your spouse, or something. That's okay. You could sit in the room, you can watch the testimony, and then you can speak to it, like any other citizen. Don't do this stuff, don't do any of that. But say it were affecting your business, and you had a business partner who could come to the podium and speak to it. Stay out of the building. Let your business partner do it. That's the weird nuance of the FPPC regulations there. So, hey, you asked, so...
And with the new transparency rules that we have, which are not the, not a business conflict of interest, or 500 feet of your property, but you sit, you sit on a deliberative body, like, say, a neighborhood organization that's written a letter, but you don't have an FPPC conflict, do you have to leave the room?
You know, I can't speak to your transparency procedures. I have not really had an opportunity to dig into those yet. If it does not rise to the level of a legal conflict under FPPC rules, then all of those rules just simply do not apply. Again, I would have to go... Again, I would have to go back and, you know, take a look at your transparency rules to find out if that would require leaving the room as well. But I can tell you with the FPPC rules, the general rule is, yeah, you need to leave the room. Unless there's that narrow sitting in so you can testify-
Sort of a free speech exception.
What if you don't have a legal, technical legal conflict, but you have an appearance of impropriety or a conflict potentially?
Well, then that's your call as an official.
It's your call. But if it's not legal, but you're doing it out of an abundance of caution, can you sit in the audience, or do you have to leave the dais and go in another room?
I would say, if it doesn't rise to a legal conflict, I don't think you have to leave the room because the FPPC regulations do not apply. As a matter of practice, I know that a number of elected officials who do in fact leave the room so that there's no appearance, no nothing-
Just to be safe.
Right. With appointed officials, I've seen it both directions. But I don't think that you have to leave the room because the FPPC regs do not apply to you in that case.
Thank you.
So it's entire... It's a question of, you know, personal behavior on that one.
And so, looking at this, we have struck the second sentence in... When we approved this, we'd strike the second sentence in 10. Am I correct?
Actually, Madam Chair, what I'd like to suggest to the Commission is amending that second sentence to say, "Public comments shall be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission."
Okay.
And that would be also consistent-
That's sort of what the first sentence says, though, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that what the first sentence says?
The first sentence gets more into, you can address anything during general public comment, even if it's not on the agenda, except for special meetings. And there's a special rule for special meetings, which is only stuff on the agenda. There's really no general public comment in a special meeting.
Maybe we could... It would be clear what I think maybe the Chair would-
I think the first sentence is real-
The Chair would like is to suggest that during a public hearing, that the public should only address the item at hand, right?
Right. I think we've got... We have the public comments section, but we don't have public comments during a public hearing. And maybe we should say that during a hearing on a matter, questions, you know, comments should be on the matter at hand.
Madam Chair, if you take a look at the second paragraph of Section 12, on page five of 12, it says, "Questions or comments from the public shall be limited to the subject under consideration for a public hearing."
It's fine, we've got it.
So I think we've-
So if we change the language to your proposed language, which I'm fine with, Commissioner Woods, are you fine with that change? So we would adopt the language you suggest?
Right. Yeah. For example, in general public comment, somebody could come up and say, "The Planning Commission, the city, needs to do something about that street out there." That may be within your jurisdiction, and so that would be fair. They could not get up to the podium and go, "We need to do something about ISIS in Syria." Not within our jurisdiction. So that's not really public comment for the Planning Commission.
Hey, this is a pretty expansive planning commission.
Shall we leave that item to the-
Wow, you've got some pretty strong jurisdiction then.
Shall we leave that item to our city council? Those items? Okay. So we have, just to go back on this, we have a change on page four of 12 in item 10. We suggested... There was one suggestion that on item 12, which is six of 12, the Chair may invite the applicant-appellant. So we add the word "appellant." And then on page 10 of 12, we have... Can you read back to us the language that you are suggesting?
Okay. I'm trying to follow the maximum of lesses more here, so. Item two, subcommittee purpose. Planning Commission's subcommittees may be formed to serve the following non-exclusive purposes. Just put that in there. And I think that opens it up enough that you're not going to be just stuck in those three categories, and if, you know, you had the wild card issue come up.
Does that satisfy you, Commissioner Donaveld?
It does, and it's very refreshing for a lawyer to speak in terms of lesses more, fewer words. That's... I like that, yes. I think, because I think gives us enough flexibility to open it up to a few other outliers that I was thinking about.
Okay. Any other suggestions to the rules changes?
Question. And maybe it's been clarified, and I apologize if I've missed this, but when does the public get a chance to comment on a specific item and when don't they? And is that covered in the procedures?
Yeah. I mean, typically, if an item is formally agendized, public comment usually comes at that point. If the item agendizes a public hearing, then obviously that testimony is given in the context of a hearing. General public comment is typically for items not on the agenda.
No, I know that, but like, why wouldn't, for instance, 4A and 4B have had a pub... And the laws what?
Sorry, I was being lawyer now. I'll let the lawyer explain.
Where are you, Michael?
Well, just, what qualifies 4A and 4B as an exemption? Sorry? I'm just talking about our current agenda today.
Oh. Perhaps, Madam Chair, I can address that. In terms of what is a public hearing versus what is not a public hearing, that's identified in Chapter 94 of the zoning code. It specifically identifies what types of applications are public hearings. As far as your rules of procedure, it more or less exists by default that public hearings on page five of 12 identifies the fact that those who wish to speak at public hearings do so under the public hearing itself. Otherwise, the language on page four, under public comments, that is the language that identifies that if it's not a public hearing, that's where you speak to the Commission. So it's not as explicit, perhaps, as you might like it to be, but those are the guidelines in terms of how people address during public hearings versus those items that are not public hearings.
Okay. And then, so I'd have to look at the zoning code. Okay. And then, there was a com... A suggestion, maybe when we were discussing this previously, that the agenda itself clarify when the public could speak on an item and when they were prohibited from speaking on it, at the time of the hearing itself, not at the beginning of the meeting. Did that... Did we lose that, or is that something that'll just happen?
I remember us having the discussion of that, and what I will do for your next agenda, I'll add language that clarifies that point, as part of the... Right after the roll call, where we have report of the agenda, acceptance of the agenda, public comments, we'll add some additional language there, identifying that under non-public hearing items, members of the public would need to comment under public comments. So maybe we can do that to clarify that situation.
Does that go in the procedures, or you're just going to do that?
It doesn't need to go in the procedures. It's just something that we can amend our agenda to include that, to help let the public know when they can speak on items.
Well, again, just speaking in terms of, when I was sitting in the audience looking at these agendas, it's never cleared to me what's a public hearing, what's not. I just couldn't figure it out. If you moved public comments under four, new business, it would be clear that that is when you speak on any of those items that are not public hearings. Having it way up after the acceptance of the agenda is not intuitive that you can speak to these... And I know it was verbalized by the Chair, but it's still, when you look at the document, it's not clear, "Oh, I need to speak..." And let's say if somebody shows up late, and they didn't hear your introduction, they don't realize, "Oh, I have to speak about 4A now." I just would rather have it be where-
Perhaps we can do this. One of the issues is that public comment needs to be at the beginning of the meeting. And correct me if I'm wrong, I may be thinking of the wrong state, but state law requires us to have public comments at the beginning of the meeting, so it gives the opportunity for the public to talk. What we might do to our agenda is just indicate in parentheses that if you wish to speak on items 4A and 4B, you would do so under public comment at this portion of the agenda. So we can actually identify the agenda item numbers-
That would help a lot.
So people understand that, "Oh, this is the part where I speak."
Yeah, that would help a lot, I think.
Madam Chair.
I think it's good to have it there, and also to verbally have it for people who don't read.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for information, getting to what I think Commissioner Wood's original comment or concern was, when I was previously on a planning commission in another city, we always let the public discuss anything other than things that were on the consent calendar. We basically took testimony on all items. I don't think that that was required, it just was our practice. I'm not suggesting that here, but I think that's what the public would like, obviously. Something to consider. It's not completely out of line.
I don't-
I'm not suggesting it, but just saying it-
I don't think it's-
Madam Chair, if I could, I would agree, and in my profession, we've... I've also been in situations, especially on heated issues, they are limited, that, you know, just taking public comment, you're not reacting to it or anything of that nature. It's not a public hearing, you don't have to do it, I guess. But just hearing from the public sometime, and I think we gave the example of a house you had a couple of meetings ago, that the information was very successful in the decision-making. I just don't want our rules and regs to preclude that opportunity or get into a political one, where one's speaking and one isn't because of politics.
Flynn, why don't we leave that up to the Chair? That on an item where... We have had items where we would have, say, 20 people in front of us, where it wasn't a public hearing item. I think some of the cell towers are... You'll either get 20 people in favor or 20 people against. But we have allowed somebody from that group to represent what their concerns were. But I think that's maybe allowing the Chair to make that decision.
Okay. So what we will do is, we will add language that indicates, and let me just make a note of this, that the Chair may take testimony on items... May invite testimony on items where necessary for Commission decisions.
I think I'm going to have to think about that.
Do you want to hold that question for, and rather than approve this today, take...
Let's maybe go ahead and continue this to April 11th, and so that way, that gives us time to discuss how we invite testimony without opening the floodgates, where the testimony is truly relevant to the matter at hand in terms of what will help the Planning Commission in making a determination if the application meets codes and requirements. So we'll go ahead and work on that, then.
So just in terms of a sense of the body, we have basically approved all of the changes, including the suggested language, and we have one item that we want you to come back on. Does that sound correct? So that when we open this up next time, it'll only be a discussion on a limited item on public testimony.
Okay.
So do we take a motion to continue this item until... Yes.
Another alternative would be to approve the changes we've got, because we don't... And I don't know how long it would take to even flesh out if we wanted to change the public testimony part of it, but to go ahead and approve what we've done. So I would make a motion to approve what we've already-
That's fine. The Chair will accept that. So we have a motion to approve what we've done. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and then we would... And have staff come back with this other issue when they're at-
Correct.
At a time when they're comfortable, when they have a resolution on the issue.
April 11th.
April... Have staff come back on April 11th with the-
We'll get this done.
Okay, with some language on public, additional public comment. So can we call the roll? I think Commissioner Caloridin was the second.
Can you enter it on the screen?
Yes.
Did you hit the button?
Let me... Oh, second, oh, I'm sorry.
Second motion, yes. Okay.
Did that pop up? Okay.
So we've approved the changes to date, and with staff coming back on one issue on April 11th. Having gotten through those very long agenda, those two long, three long agenda items, let's move on to... We don't have a city council liaison report today. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any from the Commission?
There's a red tree, no.
I have one, which is, I just wanted, and it's not for the Commission, but to commend the use of our city for their mobilizations on important issues, and say how proud I am of them. And I had a couple of issues. The 29th, at 3:00, there is a meeting, and Flynn, I'm not quite sure where, on the group that is meeting on the park, the downtown park. For people who don't know, the city council abbreviated the process by having two representatives of the Planning Commission, the Arts Commission, AAC, I'm not sure who else, sit with the council to get approvals on the park design so they could expedite the process. I'm not sure if this is that meeting.
I... No. I've got the downtown park subcommittee meeting on April the 3rd.
Or April 3rd, sorry.
It got moved a couple of times, and April the 3rd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., I believe that's in the large conference room, according to my meeting invite. And that is members, Chair Wermuth and Commissioner Hirschbein are the two representatives there. I apologize, I was trying to get some plans together that I could forward to all members of the Planning Commission, so you could see the design of the downtown park. Unfortunately, I don't have those for you right now. I'll try and email them to you if I have them later, just so that all members of the Commission have a chance to review the proposed plans, if you haven't seen them already.
And if you have comments, if you would get them to... Can they send them to Commissioner Hirschbein, myself, and you? Is that...
Actually, what I would prefer that they do is they forward those comments to me, and then I will forward those to you and Commissioner Hirschbein.
Okay. And then we have been at-
I have a comment.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Did I read somewhere that there's going to be a study session on April 11th, or...
I was going to get to that in-
Were you now?
Yes.
Wait.
You stole my thunder.
We have two more subcommittees that we've been asked to take a look at. One is on fairly broad issues related to parking, to review our code to see if the parking requirements we have are appropriate in this time of Uber and Lyft, where people are using more of services to get to destinations. But I think it might be broader than that, in that I believe there's a subcommittee in the neighborhood organization on the problems that are happening with parking in the neighborhoods around commercial zones, and I think that would probably be more the design district than anything else. There's a concern about the impact of there not being enough parking in some areas that people's neighborhoods are being parked up. And there's a third issue that has begun to emerge, which is parking around trailheads of CV Link when the trail is not connected. of CV Link when the trail is not connected. So, I think there's interim parking issues. So, it's a pretty broad mandate, as far as I know, but we have been asked by city council to take a look at that. Commissioner Hudson has volunteered to be on that. I was thinking, Commissioner Donenfeld, if you, I don't know how you would feel about doing that? And, you're already on two commissions that require work, so I'm wondering...
I'm retired.
You're retired, you have time? Okay. Nobody else volunteered or raised their hands, so I was looking for your hand, but I didn't see it. And then, also at council, there were issues around whether the adequacy of our noise ordinance. I don't know if that's something we should think about a little bit before we think about a subcommittee on it, Flynn?
Yes. I would wait until the city council is ready to move forward on that item. It was indicated that they were not going to move immediately on that. So, I believe that we have a couple of months before we put that together.
There are two issues that are connected to it. One is the, whether or not, given the large amount of ambient noise in the city, the city's noise limits at the periphery of the property are set appropriately. And the second question was whether or not the noise ordinance captures bass sounds adequately, and whether there should be a standard for bass. So, it kind of went in two different directions.
I think my question is this, there ought to be a formal procedure whereby council informs us in a more formal way, that they want us to look into these issues, because you're getting them from conversations you've had with people, or maybe watching it on television or being there, but we ought to get a directive with the parameters, so it's well-defined, and we know exactly what it is they want us to be doing.
Before we do that, actually, on parking, I think that would be good. I mean, we got a message from one of the city consulars asking us to do it, but it's not very formal. Although, most of the things like this, we get in, we don't get it as, they don't take a formal motion at council to ask us to do things.
And just to respond to Commissioner Donenfeld's comment, typically, that would either come through staff, that I would receive a directive from the city manager to have the chair appoint members to a subcommittee, or else, another way that that might happen, now that we have a council liaison, is it might come through the council liaison's report.
Well, for example, did you get a request from Councilwoman Holstich, that she wanted us to look into parking sufficiency numbers in light of Uber and Lyft?
There was the discussion at city council meeting from both...
And they instructed you to tell us that we should be looking into it?
No, we got a message, we got a message from a different city consular, asking us to set up a subcommittee.
I just think there's...
I will verify that.
Why don't we verify it before we have the committee set up?
Okay. I'll be happy to do that for our next meeting.
We had discussed it with, I think, we had an informal discussion with the council liaison during the break on the issue, so they actually, she actually mentioned it, but I think it would be better to get a parameters.
Bet that the research is only beginning on the effects of Uber and Lyft.
More specifically, then, we were sort of training the council to go through the liaison to request us to be on these subcommittees.
Or through the city manager, yes.
Yeah. So, if a councilman or woman, councilperson says, you know, "We really want the subcommittee on so-and-so," I might say, "Well, you know, you probably should talk to the liaison and go through..."
That would be appropriate.
That sounds good. Okay. We stand corrected. Do you have, I guess, questions for you, is setting up meetings of the subcommittees that have been meeting, so that we have time schedules, and we can post them now that we have rules?
Yes. I will want to meet with the members of the PDD Subcommittee to discuss our next meeting, if we can do that right afterwards, and set a date for doing that. And then, Mr. Newell will get together with the members who are serving on the golf course Subcommittee, to establish your next meeting for that one as well. Unless there are any other comments from the Planning Commission, I have just a few items to mention to you. Number one is that we will schedule a study session on April the 11th. We'll begin that at 11:00 a.m. in the large conference room. The topic for discussion for that one will be a pre-application that was submitted to us for the, I'm going to call it the Tommy Jacobs Golf Course property off of LCA Low. So, that will be the subject of that study session. Again, this is just a pre-application that has been submitted.
How does that application relate to our golf course Subcommittee?
How that application relates is, again, this is a pre-application. They haven't filed formal applications at this point in time. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you was, the Infusion Beach project was discussed at the city council meeting last week and was approved. Several of the city council members commended the Planning Commission on the very thorough job that you did in terms of your conditions of approval, and in looking at protecting the impacts from adjacent residents. So, I just wanted you to be aware that the time that you spent on that was appreciated by the city council, and so that's that. Also, I want to mention, there will be an unveiling of the statue in the Paseo, right adjacent to the Rowan Hotel, at 6:30 p.m. tomorrow. You can join us for that, that would be wonderful. And that concludes all of my comments. And you've already met Mr. Priest, we're happy to have him onboard with us now.
What's the last name? What's the name again?
Excuse me?
Jim Priest.
Priest?
Just like Catholic priest.
Okay.
Keeps it easy. As I tell people, priest, priest may be my last name, not my game.
Oh, the meeting is adjourned until April 11th. Oh, until, what time is our...
11.
Study session will be at 11:00 a.m.
Until a study session at 11:00 a.m. on April 11th.
We need to wait and go over the meeting time.